I'm watching. I'm just waiting for Tammy to come up.
Okay, okay.
Can you text her, Kevin?
Yeah. He said, wait.
I can hear it from the comments in the whole teams. All right, we will call this meeting a quarter Monday, March 8th, 2021, 4:43 PM. We can join or play the Williams.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for justice against one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This is under one of the laws of collaboration. Sarah Rolholtz.
Yep, Don Forten here. Abby Green.
And we will not be in attendance tonight. She is at work.
Sarah Jones here. Craig Corpola.
Here.
Dana Wells-Denny.
Here.
Jeff Wolfersberger.
Here.
Tim Wood.
Here.
1.05 Adenda. Does anyone have anything to add to tonight's game? All right, thank you. 2.01 comments from the public. See anyone? Tammy informed us that nobody was signed up online. To call them, just make sure nobody's here. Nobody is here. 3.01 graduation date. This has been brought to the board because we are moving or requesting to move graduation date to May the 23rd.
So we have Mr. Faber and Mr. Hutchery who would like to represent on this date.
And good evening. And just to clarify, it's not a, it's not a request to move. It is a recommendation on our end that the date set from last year was May 23rd, and that is the date we've had on the calendar. And the recommendation would be now last year, as we went through an unknown season, we, we voted and we moved it to midsummer. You know, always hoping that there were going to be less restrictions on public gatherings. And it didn't change significantly as far as the type of ceremony we're allowed to have based upon the gathering restrictions. And right now, we would, we're just making the recommendation that it's scheduled for May 23rd. We stay with May 23rd and obviously the type of ceremony, what it looks like will be obviously dependent upon the gathering restrictions at that time.
She's a terrible person. She doesn't miss me.
Mr. Hudson.
Only funny to me.
Mr. Hudson. And meeting with a committee of seniors to work out some of the traditional decisions they make for graduation. And one of the things the next meeting start working on was looking at what kind of format might it be? One possibility is do it in the fashion we did last year. It wouldn't have to be necessarily, but that would be one possibility. And right now, currently our max ability to gather in an in-person indoors is at 375. And so that would leave us some opportunities to do some mini-style graduations, multiple ones within our own auditorium with a reduced capacity, just session after session. So we can explore those possibilities. Bottom line is our recommendation is just to stick with May 23rd and not to try and push it out further, further, waiting for things to turn up more.
Thank you for that clarification, Tom. So a couple proactive steps that you have taken so far. Right now, we have, correct me if I'm wrong, we have WK auditorium reserved.
We do. Yep.
So. I'm sorry.
Yes, we do have that reserved. And then the other things we're looking at is if the, you know, if there's a route that we want to go, the, the outdoor route like we did last year, we can start reserving tents and the, the equipment we needed for that. You know, it's just, just a matter of, I guess, figuring out what the possibilities would be, working with those graduates, see, you know, which sounds most appealing to them as well. Correct.
Awesome. Any questions? Any Dana or Craig that are on? I can't see hands. So if you guys have any questions.
Yeah, this is Dana. I had a quick question is, right now, based on the capacity of WK, do we know the capacity? And based on that capacity with the amount of graduating seniors that we have this year, do we know how many guests that each senior would have based on the current regulations, I mean, or stipulations that were under, just so we can kind of have some additional information before we say, yeah, let's do this in a different area.
So if, if we did, regardless of whether it's WK Callag Arena, our gym, even if we had a 10,000-seat gymnasium. Currently, the regulation, the restrictions are anything under, the seats under 10,000, the maximum capacity would be 375. So looking at a graduating class in the neighborhood of 170 kids, maybe 160, you know, that's why we're thinking, okay, what could we do similar is, like I said, mini style of maybe five graduates. Every, maybe even 30, everybody gets 10 guests. And then we kind of go through a mini celebration with them and then the next group, then the next group kind of through the course of a series of a day, of the day. So our gathering limits, like I said, are 375. And one, I'll share one other thing. Mr. Hutcherson, I have been reviewing just last Thursday, the MASAS, Michigan Association Secondary School Principals. They had a webinar about some of these end-of-school events and talking about ideas and what different schools are proposing, what they might be trying, as well as reminders about the limitations. Because it was during school, I didn't get a chance to watch it, but we got the recording. I'm going to go through. Mr. Hutcherson's watched some of it already. I know he gets some ideas.
So many options. We'll just, we'll have to wait to see what the restrictions are when we get closer. And like you said, we've always got the football field. We've got our own facility and we got GOSK to reassure everyone that somehow or another it will take place on May 23rd.
Correct.
Tom, I have one other question. This is Dana again. Is there, is there a cutoff date that we have to let WK know whether or not we're going to use it or we'll still get charged a fee for rental?
I'll follow up, but they've been pretty flexible. I mean, last year, we had the same thing. We had them booked. We booked it twice last year. I mean, we booked it for the original date in May. We booked it again for the date in July and they, they were, you know, accommodating, understanding. They get the fact that, hey, we want this if it's going to suit our needs. And in this environment with limited gathering amounts, I don't think they're having as many events there anyway. So it's not like over holding it for you. We said no to somebody else. So. But yeah, I don't believe there's any, going to be any kind of cost. We, we got our entire refund back last year from the situation, even after holding two different dates. So. You know, when I spoke with her at the beginning of the year, she, she mentioned that, that she would be very flexible. She's understanding of everyone's situation. So I think she'd be accommodating.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
I have a question.
Yes, me.
Um, I don't know. So last year, when this was all brought up, but this was not really for Tom, but maybe for, more for Kevin. We talked about purchasing a tent, knowing that we may have to be using it. Did we ever check into that?
Yeah, but we did not. Based on what it costs to rent and to purchase, we did not purchase the. We had it only, I said, we had it on our sites to purchase, but we started wondering if all the actual fund balance we have on the, for the year and maybe in the next year.
Is that something that the Cares money would?
Yes.
Public?
And even though it's not something we would want to look at the Cares money, it'd be something that is already there in the third or fourth day. Man, you can explain that we took some of those funds and they went back into the fund balance. We would still just use the fund balance funds. So that we wouldn't have to go back and explain how we use it for the actual tents, excuse me, for the, yeah, for the tents. We shouldn't be able to use fund balance money. If that's something that we want to look at, now would be the time for us to go into it, if we want to actually purchase the actual tent.
Well, this might be the second year now that it, that we may be using it.
And we had mentioned, I think we had a conversation that it doesn't have to be just for graduation. It could be some other function. So I could send a bright belt and see if we can get some type of nice dent that we could actually purchase.
Get an idea of rental versus purchase long term?
Yes. We do that.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone have anything else? All right. I appreciate it, guys. 3.02 early graduation student discussion. Tom Tony, sounds like we have a junior ready to graduate.
Well, he's getting there. So our, basically the board policy on early graduation is essentially that the, they apply to the principal. Met with the student and the parent, reviewed the situation, and he, he has a great desire to start in a career in aviation. And his name is Jassir Roberts. He has already applied to colleges, been accepted and gotten his financial aid package information from Grand Valley State. So he is excited to begin there next fall. And we've already got him enrolled with the requirements. He needs to complete his degree, high school diploma degree this year. You know, typically, a, you know, a fourth-year student who's on track, typically their senior year, all they need is their senior English and a math class. It's probably all their remaining requirements to graduate. And he was in that situation. He's just got some other pieces taking through E2020, but talked to mom again today. Make sure we're still on track. And that's still the plan for him to be ready, prepared to graduate here in May.
Awesome.
That is wonderful.
In the process of board that's approved, so this is an actual policy that the board, we announce that being the, is that agenda?
Correct. Right. Anyone have any questions for Tony or Tom? Awesome. Congratulations, Tom, man. And guys, thank you. This will be moved on to next week's working.
Thank you.
Thank you. 3.03 bond updates.
So visitors? Yes, we have the visitors. And as we mentioned at the last meeting, they're going to introduce themselves, kind of take, they got kids in the district. And then they're going to kind of give an update, but there are also going to be questions because this is where we bring information to the board. And now we're going to ask the board to actually go back and give us the feedback based on these information. Okay, whichever, I don't know, Jared, looks like you have the hot seat to start, sir, and then, or Bill, either one.
I'll go ahead and go real quick and get it out of the way here. I'm Jared Curtley. I have, my twins are in third grade at Dunlap. My wife is a teacher at Murray Air Pro at North Penn. So we have a lot of things going on within the district.
Well, my name's Bill Simons. My youngest son is a junior and he's Penfield in math science. My oldest son graduated a few years, years ago. He's about to graduate from Western. I'm a graduate of Penfield. Love the district and I've been working with Superintendent Simmons and the rest of the committee for a year or so, trying to, trying to put this idea together, bring to the board for their support.
Awesome. Do you want to go ahead and share out some of those points that were shared in the last meeting?
All right, say it again.
You want to share out some of those talking points that we're also board?
Oh, I'd love to. So we've been meeting every week on Thursdays and we have generally between a dozen and 15 of us in attendance. And along with folks who are on the call tonight, many other, whether board members or administrators are involved. We've learned a lot about our district. We, and, and one, one of the surveys that we just recently went over, comment was how beautiful the buildings are, which they are. And congratulations Dewey and, and all the staff. Last year, though, before COVID, I was fortunate to be on a guided tour by both Todd McDonald, Dave Martin, Dewey, and Superintendent Simmons to see the buildings. I, I graduated 40 years ago and much of it, you know, was a flashback. But I'll tell you what, with seeing the inside of the buildings has a tremendous impact. And I, it makes me why I'm very enthused to try and do everything I can to help our community understand that we need some tender loving care on our buildings. And it's things that it wasn't neglect because the things do look very, very nice. But major things that we all agreed on, and we've done many different kind of simulations on if we had $30 million to spend and $64 million of need, what do we want to do? And so we all independently put together our, our wish list, our desired list, things that need to be done. And I'll tell you, Dewey is such a wonderful person to be on the committee because there's some things that are expensive things that we all believe need to be done. And we also have the 3-5 building that we would love to do also. And, and we're trying to decide the, the major things to present to you for you to carry forward. Where we're, yeah, major discussions, some of the things that know we want. I'm going to kind of look at my list here, things that as a committee, we've agreed on. We know that the air quality in all the buildings, the elementary and the middle school need to be fixed. And those are huge expenses. And so we, I'm going to turn my volume down a little bit. I don't think you're getting feedback, but it's. All right. So it's between $64 million worth of projects that we need a roof on the, the middle school. Very, very expensive. We talked about just patching it, but I think we all decided we need to spend the money to replace the roof on the middle school. An entry, safety area entering the high school. For the outside, now this, boy, it's going to be hard. We know we need some athletic facility improvement. My son ran track and I know way back, this long time ago, and way back 40 years ago when I was in school, we've got a six-lane track. And in order to compete and host meets, we need an eight-point track. The concession stand, we universally believe that we need to replace the concession stand, replace the blinkers. Let's see. Well, those are some of the high points, but then to try and do everything that. Well, tho- those are some of the high points, but then to try and do everything that we want to do that we know needs to be done. You know, we're limited to the thirty million dollars that we're, we're fortunate that if we're able to do this, we're able to do this in a way that all of our Penfield taxpayers will not see an increase in the amount of taxes they pay. So that's, that's kind of a nice talking point that we're going to have. Is we're not going to increase the amount of their payments. So we're, obviously you all know, we're planning, hoping to extend, excuse me, extend the maturity of the bonds by issuing some new bonds. Uh, but that, that's kind of it. Our, our group is very enthused. We're trying to get more people to join us for our meetings. And I know board members are limited. We don't want to have a quorum of the board there, but if you have any friends or family or any neighbors that you can send our way, we want more community involvement. So any questions any of you have?
Is there a board member attending these?
No. I, um, let me also add that there were, uh, there's a couple of strategic things that are coming about that will need the board and some input from the community. One of those is that I brought up the, uh, preschool concept and the restructuring or reconfiguration of Purdy and North Penn. Now that only came up because in the previous bond, there was a question about preschool. So I don't know, and we don't know, if that's something that still needs to be discussed or not. So we need to have an opportunity to get boards, even at this time, be able to share out what your thoughts are. Because reconfiguration was one of the questions that went out on the actual, um, um, with the Epic M R A. It showed some support, but it was probably because there wasn't enough information that led into it. So we kind of shared it with you. The reconfiguration would be Purdy, which would hold the, um, the four year olds in the early fives, which would be considered preschool and the kindergarten. So Purdy, because it had twelve classrooms, would be able to hold those, those students, five and five, and then a couple of, uh, resource rooms. But North Penn would turn into a first and second grade building. And then from the North Penn, we'd have to add two classrooms. And then there's enough classrooms, so then they go into the three five building. So the question is, we actually have, which you will hear from Trevor, uh, later on, he's going to be talking about the school of choice and how many kids are coming in as kindergartners. We couldn't leave it as it is without reconfiguration and still have some ten or fifteen kindergartners that we've been kind of turning away, saying that we were already filled. Again, which Trevor will be able to share out. And then prepare for the three five building, either being renovated or a new three five building. So that's the question because if there's a new three five building, then that's seventeen million, leaves you a small amount, leaves us a small amount in order to try to, some thirteen million to try to do all the other things that need to be done in the district. This group has consensus and consensus on the fact that maybe a three five building, new three five building is not a good idea. Now they're still working on it because I'm still researching, but some of my research is coming to the board to say, is there a need for preschool? And if it is, is there a need to reconfigure the elementary buildings before they made it to the three five? And if it's not, then there are some other things that the committee can go back and start working on. Uh, some of these points, think of it as two different strategies, two different points of, uh, conversation. One is about reconfiguration and the other is new three five building or just renovate the three five building. Seventeen million for a new one, eight million to renovate. And if it's eight million to renovate, then that's twenty two million that can be used across the rest of the district.
So explain real quick why you're, stop me right there. Explain your, so the, the thought was to essentially leave the front of Purdy, tear it all down, rebuild.
Dunlap.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's what, yes.
So your renovation, what are you, what are we thinking as a committee, what are you thinking of renovation as well?
So the renovation and I, I know what the thought process is, taking out everything except the new pieces that were built in. However, I think we need to let, let's see, Tyler or Bill, we, I mean, we've been talking about it, but we hadn't really come to a consensus on that yet, Bill, what, what that would actually look like, Tyler?
Well, well, this is Bill, that's right. We, I personally was leaning about remodeling, uh, Dunlap and, and that was just because of all the needs that we, we have in the district. Um, there's a, and, and, um, the guys, uh, uh, Dave Martin or Todd, I don't know if they have input on the specifics on the building. I know it's our committee that is charged with this, but these guys have been wonderful at keeping us focused on the areas that need improvement. So, um, I don't know if either of you gentlemen have any specifics on what all the list of remodeling for Dunlap that we're considering?
Yeah.
I could, I could speak to it, Bill, and the eight point two number comes directly from the, uh, uh, assessment of all of the doc, of all of the buildings, uh, across the district. And that's basically everything that was included in the assessment, including, uh, mechanical, electrical, roofing, et cetera.
Does that help with the question? Because I know we, you actually, it's not this time, but we can actually have this dialogue.
Yeah, um.
So it, it's not as if we're saying we're going to take out two wings or take out the three wings and leave the office space and take out the gym and create a new gym. Those are in the, uh, discussion, but having, it's not like it's been discipled, but that's some of the discussion. Is there some eight hundred thousand that was put into building new bathrooms, new office space, air conditioning, that whole area, which is right there at the front? The cafeteria still looks nice from where, um, you can see it from the road. So that whole piece is not something we talk about renovation. We're not talking about tearing down that is already is new and where we put money into. Uh, the boiler, you know, it's one of the oldest, it's the steam boiler. Uh, those are things that are, um, being talked about right now. But the renovation itself, it is left with nine million dollars left to renovate, which means you have to buy a new three five building.
Okay. Over the next month, I would just ask for some more itemized detail of, you know, what the eight point two million to remodel, that is the stuff. Um, you know, approximately X for, you know, HVAC.
Yep.
The electrical, mechanical.
Well, and Dewey, you have, um, some of those things that you have also spoke on during the meeting that also became concerns for renovating that Dun, at Dunlap.
Yeah, most of it did surround the, um, HVAC because that is pretty aged. That is a steam system. Um, steam consists of just that, steam and then condensate, which is how steam gets back. Um, all of that's, uh, pretty aged and, um, uh, with the renovations, we would then be able to, uh, increase our ventilation to, um, you know, today's standard, uh, so that was a biggie also. Um, I, the gymnasium, of course, would get some, uh, an overhaul. That needs a new floor. If anybody's seen that in the last couple of years, you can see that. Um, um, that's all I can come up with off the top of my head.
Were they working on options to where they actually show what that eight point two million has involved in it, you know, as far as line items? And, uh, that information they're going to be able to come back and share. There's a, a couple of more things that, hey, uh, Jared, did you want to share some of these? Um, some of these points that were sent to us, you want to share those points so that we can kind of help with it? It's almost a summary, but at the same time it gives a great picture of what work has been done thus far?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, kind of going off of what, what Bill was saying, we have kind of what we have agreed to is, is we tried to kind of line item everything on the uh, spreadsheet that we've been working with. And, and as we kind of move through, uh, the next few weeks, uh, just some kind of important steps are upcoming, part of the reason why we're asking for that feedback. Uh, because we do have a few, uh, community forums that'll be taking place in April. And we want to be able to have not only the numbers to the board, of course, but to also be able to speak to that in the community forum, because I think kind of the consensus, uh, in, I think I kind of get the feeling within the room itself here that people kind of want to know numbers. Now, we've talked about a lot of different things. We've talked a lot of different ideas, but here's what we're proposing. So that way you guys can kind of take that as the board and, and work that through and, um, understand kind of where we got our numbers from so that you can kind of either, you know, take it, pick and pair with what you need. Uh, we want to be able to have a consistent process or consistent thought when we go to uh, the, the community in, in April, because our time to, to get it back to you, the board is, is quickly, you know, coming March, or I'm sorry, May does not seem that far away, but at the same time, um, it, it feels right up close. You know, it's, it's, it's both far and, and close at this point in time. So we're trying to work through these things, get the feedback. I, I think some of the community details that we need from, um, you know, the, the preschool program, different things that are we interested in will help us land on, do we want to make certain things important or not to, to present to you? So I think we've done a lot of, of, of work. We have consensus on, on a handful of items. Um, I, I do think as, as everybody's said, we're, we're leaning more towards I kind of our proposal A being not a, um, brand new building, but wanting to be cognizant of what does that bring if we do that future expansion? Um, in, in kind of thinking next steps past not only this bond, if we were to get it across the line, but what would our future look like in the district? So, um, we're still doing a lot of, of, of number crunching and we want to try to bring back the, you know, the, the fullest and strongest proposal that we can to the board here and probably in the next few weeks.
So, so if you would, let me share a couple of the, um, what the advisory committee has looked at so far. You kind of, I did, they reviewed the facility assessment plan from King Scott and, yes, yeah. They've also reviewed the financial scenarios that are available from the capital improvement bond and that election. They reviewed the committee survey that was produced by Epic M R A that was back in November twenty twenty. They've, uh, also, they have, uh, reviewed and prioritized listing of the sixty four point three million and identified needs and wants that was actually out of that assessment plan. They've discussed the benefits and the, uh, deterrence of the potential new grade for a three five building. You know, the one we was talking about earlier, yes, or renovate. They've discussed the benefits and the, uh, deterrence of the pre K program and the additions and the grade level reconfiguration. So they've had that conversation. To date, let me give you some of the significant findings, uh, to date. The target is November of twenty twenty one, the election date. There are a series of bond sales that allow maximum bond in the amount of thirty million. Last year it was twenty five, but that was when we were looking at going for the bond in November of twenty twenty. But since we didn't go in May of twenty twenty one and now looking at trying to go in twenty, November of twenty twenty one, there's an extra five million. And I say extra five million, again, it's still the extended, uh, part of not raising how much you pay in the fall and in the, uh, spring, but just extending the loan of that bond. There, um, the committee has, uh, reached a consensus that they talked about earlier with, hey, the roof on the middle school, some of the things that Bill had showed earlier. And then let me just share with you the next steps. They're going to continue to work and refine that scope. So they do bring it back till they say, hey, here's the actual numbers on each line item and get some feedback from the board. And the, um, um, they're going to have the upcoming dates each, um, on Monday, which is the twelfth for the Cal meeting. That Thursday after is the first date for community forum. And it's going to be on Thursday night from six to seven o'clock. So that's the fifteenth and then another one that next Thursday, April the twenty second. And then another one on April the twenty ninth. Those community forms that go from six to seven o'clock is going to get the opportunity to have more information coming from the community. But bringing it to the board on that twelfth, on that Monday, with more of the line items, more of those talking points and questions for what to share out to the community and get that feedback. Take that data, change it for the next meeting. The, um, the board's action and the recommendations on Monday, May the seventeenth. In May, the board has to say, yes, we are going to go forward based on this option that we've got on the table we went to the community with. That is the latest date in order to put it on the November twenty twenty one election date. And then the, uh, Department of Treasury, in order to take it to them, it's June the fifteenth of twenty twenty one. So that's why April and May is so important and why April and those community forums are important. Uh, we're going to also be sharing this, uh, information with you, like a follow up from today's meeting. And anything that you've shared back as a question to say, we ever share that?
How will we reverse for the preschoolers?
For the preschoolers?
Is it the same way as, uh, just, uh, regular students?
Yeah, the preschoolers, good question. The question was the preschoolers, they actually, um, as we get eight thousand, woo, one hundred and twenty something and Gina per student, it's only seven thousand and three hundred and something for preschoolers. So it's not the same amount, but the, um, and yes, the state is talking about trying to increase that based on per student. But it is, um, it is some eight, nine thousand dollars less per student.
How much?
Excuse me?
Hundred.
Not ten thousand.
Eight, nine thousand.
Hundred, thank you.
How many, how many students do you think we would have at preschools?
Yeah, that was another question. We're not, we're talking about the preschoolers, if there's five classes and we're looking at the numbers as being, uh, again, this is still, uh, just being estimated. We want to keep the numbers to where they fit, I say fit. They go through kindergarten, I mean, preschool, kindergarten in the first grade and second grade to where they can then fit in the, um, three five building, even if it's renovated. So we're not talking about adding as much as we're talking about changing the configuration of the students. That's also a conversation because talking about adding is like, um, adding the number of students by the time they become third graders, that you need a larger building.
Exactly.
So there's the not adding, but having the two extra classrooms. If you say there's twenty five students, that is fifty. That's fifty students, but that's making room for the first graders and the second graders.
Gotcha.
And again, we're still researching that because right now we're not looking at, um, we looked at it both ways. If it is adding, then it's going to be more room that's needed when they go to
Right.
the three five building. But if we're not adding, you can still reconfigure and not actually add because they're the early fives and the four year olds. Thank you for the question. Good question. Sorry to, uh, jump in there, Bill. Uh, did I, did I miss anything? Bill, David, Todd, Dewey? Jared? Just wanted to make sure that I hit on these talking points that.
No, I appreciate it, Kevin, and, and we as, as a committee, we're, we're looking for any other community feedback and obviously we want the board to be comfortable with our recommendations. So, you know, anything you can push back our way that you're interested in, please pass it through Kevin to us and, and we'll work on it.
Personally, like you see, uh, when it's available, I don't know if it necessarily is available, but, you know, today or not, but, um, um, if we could get a rough rundown, um, this is the first we're hearing about numbers. Um, so. Um, so give us the the remodel estimate number for Dunlap, the rebuilding. Um, give us an estimate of price point for the track concession stand. What you guys thinking out there? Um, I know we have talked about purchasing property. I don't know if that's still in the talk.
Yeah.
Kind of plus on list, so we we know what questions to ask, I guess. We can ask you, we can ask you guys questions in between versus waiting another thirty days for another board meeting to to ask you some more questions. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. With that being said, is there someone?
Todd was gonna add to you.
Go ahead.
Todd, go ahead.
Yeah, have have all the board members um seen the facility assessment document, Kevin?
We uh, at the own boarding, we actually added it as one of the things. Now, we also said it's a huge document, but it's in the actual board docs, um, and it's called the facilities plan in the board docs. So we've shared it, but this is um, maybe something that you're trying to say we need to go back and take a look at?
Well, I just wanted to make sure because I obviously we have a a number of new board members. So the the pricing and the dollars that are out there were all part of the the original facility assessment. Um, the only reason we didn't share numbers tonight is because in discussion with the committee, they weren't ready to bring a couple of options forward. So there is numbers and so we will make sure at our next meeting on Thursday night, we will touch base on that. And I think the plan was team, right, that we'd be ready to then bring, we have a spreadsheet that kind of summarizes everything, and then the facility assessment is really the the detail behind that. So hope that helps clarify.
When we're um, speaking of this committee, I had brought up at a meeting prior about who's in attendance in this committee. Um, and how are we reaching out to community people, members to be a part of this committee?
Yeah, we actually, we did post on, we did post on the, maybe I'm not talking right. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so good question, because we did actually post on the website and asked for um, uh, those who are interested to actually sign up. And then from there, we create a list of those who said, yeah, I'm coming to the meeting. And some of them said, well, yeah, you got on Thursday night at five thirty, so we're not able to make it.
Kevin, we did send an email to all families too.
And we sent an email for all families? Okay, thanks, Jackie. And then we uh, then I went back and actually called some of the ones who said I was interested, but I didn't didn't know if it's five thirty every Thursday night or not. And I'm not comfortable because I've actually got, uh, one has rec. Uh, one person told me their coaching rec team, and they said not until April where they'd be able to come and join. But they were getting the minutes and they've been getting the uh, the feedback. And they are, and actually it's not the minutes, they've actually gotten the feedback because we have them to pop in to the meetings and they pop into the meeting, they got a few minutes and then they have to leave. So we uh, we have been asking each person to bring another person, kind of like what Bill was saying earlier. You know, the board members have someone that they would like to send in our direction, send them in this direction because we're gathering that information here from that community group and then we're trying to bring it back to this group. So that the board can say, okay, yeah, love out and ask more questions to fight.
So how many community members do we actually have showing up to this?
It's like twelve fifteen, yeah, it's like twelve fifteen.
Good thing. It is nice. I appreciate your guys' hard work. I think what is being requested is if there's any way um, we can make sure that, uh, just like a board meeting on our website. Um, you know, bond committee meeting this Thursday, uh, maybe in the Facebook pages, uh, the mental schools page or
What was that?
whatnot, you know.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, let's try to do our due diligence on getting as many community members as as possible.
Absolutely. Absolutely. A better keeps winning.
The reason I ask some of these questions is I did talk to the M A S B and they did say that a board, at least a board member that's willing to be a part of this should be a part of this.
Yeah, and based on the other districts that are doing it the same way, did the, did they mention the fact that the change was based on the community and then coming to the board? Or was it, I mean, based on whoever you spoke to, but yes, by all means, there are some districts that have board members that are meeting with the actual community members. There's other districts that are taking all the community members and then they're bringing it back to the board. So it's it's been done numerous ways. But not no, you know, you're not going to be on the actual advisory committee. That's not what is occurring. What's occurring is we are taking the community and taking some comments that they're taking will bring it all back to the school board. And then here, the school board is taking that information, going back out into the community and saying, here's some of the things that they're talking about. Based on what Jeff has shared, we need a little more information based on what we're going back out in the community and asking them, what do you think about this idea? I mean, we're trying to go for a bond. Do you support the thought? And if not, what do you support and what do you not support? Or have the same people that you're talking to come to the actual meeting and then gather that information and then say, now we'll bring that back to the board and have those same people do the same thing. So that the board is not having to do all of the footwork that needs.
No, I'm not saying just have the board. I'm saying invite the board. Allow them to be a part.
Yeah, and that's what this is. This is what, this is what bringing it to the community as a whole is having the board be a part.
And as a community member, are you interested in being on the board or on the committee?
Well, I was on the committee. But then I'm not invited. So you're saying that the that the community is invited, but they're actually not. You're picking and choosing who's serving on that committee.
But we're not picking and choosing. See, because
I'm not going to argue about it.
The board represents members of the community.
I'm telling you, I talked to the M A S B and they said that the board should be included in that if they choose so be.
If if the board so it chooses, which means if this board says, Kevin, the way you have it set up with an operational group and a committee advisory group and a committee as a whole, and then a campaign group, if the board says, no, we don't want to do it that way, then the board can say, here's how we're going to do it. And if the board stays, we'll do it differently, then we'll do it differently. But the board I shared was another change that would bring this information to the board in a different way. Because we've been at this eighteen months ago. So that's why it looks the way it looks now. So it is.
Well, the eighteen months, Kevin, you're insinuating that, you know, you from from what I've heard, you're saying that the board that worked on this with this planning committee, because it's been eighteen months, we haven't gotten anywhere, basically. But you got to think about COVID. We brought it to the board to vote. And the board decided not to go out and and vote on this at this time. That's what stopped it. It wasn't that the people that were involved weren't acting and working. So we need to clarify that. And I feel that we need to be working together. And by you separating that, that's causing division.
If the board wants to vote, it changed the way it's set up.
We didn't vote to have it set up this way.
Yeah, in December of twenty nineteen, before the um, C S M, the King Scott came on board, the board was asked, if you want the superintendent to go about taking these two groups and vote to move forward for bond. And the board voted, said, yeah. So that's what we've been doing since December of twenty nineteen.
Right. But you had, you had the board working with this committee. Now you've decided not to have the board working with that committee.
That's where we can agree or disagree, because coming to the committee as a whole, we didn't have the board working with this committee.
You came to the committee of the whole with that, with this committee beforehand too. Last year, all last year, we brought the information to the committee of the whole.
Yes.
Mm hmm.
Yes. So so
But since then, you have uninvited the board members that worked on this to be a part of this.
I I can say this only one more.
The Thursday meetings.
It's been recreated to where there's an operational group, there's an advisory group, and then there's the committee as a whole in which we bring the information to.
Which I wouldn't have a problem with it, but I did ask if you would provide who's in attendance to those meetings on Thursday evening, and you haven't done it.
Yeah, so some of those people who are attending are presenting today.
Some of them, yeah.
Yeah.
But you said you would provide an attendance, see.
Let's let's stick to the topics I'm being presented right here.
Yes.
Hey, Jeff, this is Dana. Can I, can I say, can I add something? I I I understand completely where Dawn's coming from. Um, as I mean, as you're probably aware, I was very heavily involved with the last two times that we tried to pass a bond and there wasn't I and I can say this wholeheartedly because I was the the chairperson of the campaign, um, one of the two times, there wasn't not enough board involvement or board support. Um, and I truly believe that's one of the reasons that it didn't pass um, as well as the transparency, um, which obviously we've asked for uh, itemized line items. Um, because um, the community felt that the community felt uh, that they they weren't in the know and not one board person helped at all the last time. So I I I completely feel where Dawn's coming from. Um, and uh, I under, I I completely understand. So I just, I I if if we if we don't understand what's happening and support it and um, I see no reason why a board member couldn't go to some of those Thursday night meetings, especially um, if they're willing.
Absolutely, and I I totally agree with you both. Um, it was voted on in December on the the structure of how um, it was now going to be presented to the board. It was after December where you, Kevin, restructured those committees is is I think is where Dawn's going. Um, you had made a suggestion for board members to to stay in a board meeting, let this awesome committee to to do the legwork for us. Um, I think it's pretty adamant, we have a couple of board members that would like to attend these meetings. I do not believe that we can deny that.
Right.
Um, if you'd like to discuss further.
Um, so, so we can discuss further? And if the board wants to recreate, then we'll have that discussion. I have no problem.
Yeah, I don't think necessarily recreate. I think we have a couple of members that would just like to attend. Is that something we need to add to next Mondays?
Right.
As it happens, yeah, we'll have to discuss that again, see if it needs to be voted on or agreed upon.
The point.
That's what this meeting is, is discussion, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So we can vote next week.
So so if the board wants to say, we understand the manner in which you have it set up, but we want to go ahead and allow members to be a part of the advisory, the community advisory group, then the board will say, Kevin, go ahead and change it and we're going to go and do it this way. And I will say, okay, we'll do it that way.
I think that'd be great. I mean, the board are community members. They they are voters, they, you know, I just don't see the reason to have the seclusion and the division. If somebody is willing to be a part, so be it.
Yeah, that's all means. If the board agrees that that's what they want to do, then we'll move in that direction. I use this, but it's there.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So does that need to?
It was talking kind of. The boys can kind of pick up on it. After I did, I didn't have batteries.
So then Jeff, you'll add that to next week's.
We will add that to next week, Jeff.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anyone else in regards to the bond update?
I just want to put in some input. Um, I would really like to see us look into the preschool as far as we can. Um, I just think the benefits of having a preschool and young five program would be huge. Um, the expectations of kindergarten are so high now that kids have to have preschool and we could almost guarantee that they would if we had that opportunity here. And I think we would see a tremendous impact with literacy um, in early elementary. So I would like to see that carried out and looked into.
I agree.
Yeah. Anyway, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I was just, I was just gonna say, we'll make sure that we add it to the discussion and that we're actually going to be trying to give more research and see if we can't get some support on that.
And I was just gonna comment on top of it. Um, I know that's a jury checking at the state. I know um, everyone who all were at our daycare, um, where the state advises us on, you know, our, we have our whole preschool program, but our state classrooms, you know, the state pretty much tells us what the need is in in our, you know, who signed up, so on and so forth. So I mean, we can get that information. We're actually getting ready to add on two more classrooms because of it.
You you're right, because it's not only the state, it's even the I S D that um, I know Erica, I can't remember her last name starts with a D, but she does that same thing. I think it's Bruck, Bruck or first, I can't remember the last name. But I can see her face, but she does that same thing for the I S D and she also has that connection with the state. Just find out if there is an actual need. That's a part of that research that's being done. Good, very good point.
Yeah.
I mean, I know just a few years back when I was looking into preschool for my own kids, there was not capacity in this community for um, my kids and we had to go to a paid program elsewhere. So at that time, there was a need. I would only imagine it's greater now, so I'd like to see us look into that.
Absolutely.
Has there been any thought with with someone aligned with the with the old church that we have down here?
Yeah, that's actually
Small or?
Yeah, that's actually where the first idea came up. And I want to say Abby was the one that mentioned it to me that in the previous bond that it was the church was supposed to be used for preschool, or it may have been Dawn that mentioned it to me earlier on, that that was a part of the actual bond. I went back and looked at it and said, okay, well, let's see if that's still a conversational piece. Um, that is, that is still part of the service to see if that the church would call to bring it up to code, or is it just building a new building or moving?
Is that being kicked around and where they're committing out?
Okay, ground them.
Yes.
Which is the reason I brought it was because there was something I was on previous phone on. This is the reason that it's here now. As a question, is is it, do we still need to have it or not?
Right.
Good question. Okay, sir. Ladies?
Nothing else on the bond?
I think we covered it all.
Guys, I thank you very much. Um, look forward to uh, to talking with you guys soon and and getting closer to this resolution.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, three point over, school of choice twenty one, twenty two. Um, Trevor has joined us this evening. Uh, the start of the discussion of school choice uh, uh, for next year. Um, Trevor, you have provided us um, some numbers here. Care to go through your attachment and explain to us your spreadsheet here?
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. So yeah, next week we get an opportunity to vote if we are going to have school of choice available. Uh, it's a resolution that we would need to pass in order to have school of choice for the twenty one, twenty two school year. And I wanted to go ahead and give you an update of enrollment and also to go over trends. And I wanted to go ahead and give you an update of enrollment and also to go over trends as they, uh, pertain to school of choice. So I'm gonna go ahead and project the, uh, spreadsheet that I shared, but I, I, I know I shared it with all of you, uh, so you can look at it on your own device if you have that. Otherwise, you can just follow along with me. And this is a great opportunity for some Q and A. If you have that along the way, I'll stop here and there to give you that chance. Um, just a reminder that when I present, I can't see hands going up or anything like that, so if, um, I'll stop periodically if you have a, a question, but otherwise you can feel free to, um, ask questions along the way.
Thank you, Trevor.
Okay, so the, the first screen that I have for you here is the, uh, enrollment trend. Now this goes from fall count. This doesn't end of year, uh, which, which we do tend to decrease a little bit throughout the year. Um, so this is from fall to fall is what you're looking at. And, and the nice thing is, um, our past practice has typically been to go unlimited school of choice with regard to, with exception of certain grade levels that are more full. So when we look at it typically speaking, um, you know, kindergarten is our exception, but grades, uh, one through twelve, we're, we're looking at an average of five to ten, uh, school of choice students that we're adding each year. Uh, you know, you, there's certain grade levels at the beginning of each building that you might see a little bit more, but on average, you're talking five to ten. Um, kindergarten is where you would see about seventy kids on average. That's about a five-year average, uh, that join us through school of choice. Uh, now if you look at years two thousand fourteen, fifteen through two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and I'll just highlight those, you'll see that we're adding about twenty-five to thirty kids a year net. Um, so that's with school of choice mostly unlimited. And then you see two thousand eighteen, nineteen, where we had a considerable fall. Um, now, uh, Dr. Corpola and, uh, Ms. Green might remember that we had a discussion here in seventeen, eighteen, where you can see we had a, a pretty large number of two thousand two hundred thirty-three, and we were kind of feeling like, you know, we should really look at this and, and discuss this a little further with school of choice. Do we really want to keep increasing that twenty-five to thirty each year? Um, we're pretty healthy at this point. We have, we have some full classrooms, kind of dependent on grade to grade. It's never perfectly even from grade to grade. And, and we made some choices to go, for the most part, we went limited. Um, and, well, I should say, actually, for the most part, we closed school of choice. We had five grade levels that remained limited. Uh, the tough thing when you go limited is you have to do it for a certain period of time. It can be as little as one month. It can be as long as the entire summer, but you cannot accept students until that period of time has passed, and there needs to be a lottery process if you have more applications than spots available. Okay, so on this particular year, when we decreased, you can see we decreased, I think I did the percentage, it was like seven percent of students we lost, um, from seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen. Uh, we went early. We went with a late, well, I would say like a late spring. Uh, that school of choice was open for a month, and what we ran into is we had a lot of families that were not thinking about the next year. So they missed the boat with that timeline, and we had a whole summer of phone calls asking to get in, and, and we, we couldn't allow it. We had Penfield families that had moved to a fall, another district, a fellow district that still wanted their children in Penfield schools, and we had to say, I'm sorry, we can't, no, we can't help you. Um, you can pursue a release from your prior district, and that's a whole big mess. Um, there's some districts that just don't do that. There's some districts that want to say, no, you're gonna have to start here at least, or, you know, they want to know a whole lot, and, and that's a big, big situation. Um, the other option you can do with limited is to extend it throughout the summer. And the issue you run in there is you can't accept anybody until the end of the summer when you have that whole lottery process. You have a lot of families that aren't gonna do that. They, they, they want the security of being able to get the school of their choice. So if they go to Penfield and you say, you know, it's May, and you say, yeah, you can put your application. We'll let you know in August if you get in. They're not gonna do that. They're gonna say, okay, well, you can take my application, but I'm also gonna, you know, apply at Lakeview and Harper and, and any other district that they may be interested in. So limited is a tough thing, and we do do it, um, in, in grade levels that are awfully full. Um, we even, e- even if they are quite full, we still like to offer five to ten spots because you have, uh, siblings that may be trying to apply. You have children that may move out of district that still want to come back, and we prioritize those families. We let them, um, they get first pick, so to speak, in, in any lottery situation. So moving on with our trend, um, you can see in two thousand nineteen, twenty, we had a nice bounce back. We had an incredible number of families that really were, um, kind of disheartened that they could not get into Penfield the, the previous year. So that's why we had that big bump there. And then in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, the current school year, you'll see a, a drop of about nine percent, and that is COVID. That's what COVID did to us. Uh, you know, we, we had, we were mostly virtual at that time, and we had a lot of families that were, um, you know, either looking at other virtual options, or they were looking at options that allowed their children to be in school, uh, more, and, and there was just a lot going on. I don't need to replay the past twelve months for you. But, um, that, that was the impact it had for us, and, and this is currently where we stand. This was fall. Uh, we're in a spring count period right now, so we're currently tabulating our enrollment and, and what we're gonna be able to count. And I can tell you that we did lose, I'd say about ten kids from, from fall to spring. Um, so we're sitting at right about two thousand is where we're gonna end up with a headcount, um, here at the spring point going into the end of the year. Um, so for all those reasons, I'm, I'm asking for us to consider school of choice. I'll show you a little bit more here. Uh, actually, before I jump over here, I promised I would ask if there are any questions, so let me toggle over. Are there any questions to this point before I go over to some of the breakdowns that I have here for you? Okay.
I don't see any, and anyway, Dana or Greg have anything, go ahead and speak out. Uh, I know the, the first and foremost would be our, uh, was it first? First and fourth grade, you know, we have, okay, let me start over. We need to address our class sizes.
Yeah.
Um, that's pretty apparent across the board. Uh, I was, I was hoping we had some numbers per grade on, uh, on a recommendation, um, of a cutoff per grade. Uh, I think this is, uh, a very big, uh, topic. Um, you know, COVID is, is ex- you know, um, expressed that in our, our twenty-eight and thirty headcount classrooms. Um, what, without putting the limit on the school of choice, how do we limit these classrooms from being these, these large twenty-six, twenty-eight count, thirty count classrooms?
Yeah, so, um, we, we have a couple of options here, and, and I'm gonna go ahead and toggle back over, and I'm gonna show you, uh, this is our current enrollment for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Okay, so this is all our kids that we currently have moved up, bumped up one year to the next grade level. Now for kindergarten, if you're saying, how the heck does he know about kindergarten already? This is a five-year average of in-district students. So that's why that looks like a small number, eighty-one kids, because if you look at our five-year average of in-district, uh, kindergartners, it'd be eighty-one. Then we bumped up each grade level thereafter. So without school of choice, and assuming that everyone is going to stay, which that isn't the case, we know we have a transient population that, um, does, does move, uh, from summer to summer, and, uh, we would be looking at one thousand nine hundred eleven i- is what that number would be without school of choice. Now what you have over here is you have a capacity, and, and the interesting thing about this is this capacity is not for COVID. This capacity is for past, past practice. Uh, so here you can see the ideal max class size. This is not to say, um, this is what we want the number to be. This is to say, this is what the max would be. In past years for kindergarten, you see twenty-two students. In first through third grade, we said twenty-five kids would be a max that we're okay with. Uh, fourth and fifth grade would be twenty-seven, and then from grades six up, we would say a max of twenty-nine to avoid that thirty number where we start to say, ooh, getting a little full on here, right? Um, we know that in grades nine through twelve, it's a little different, uh, because of, you know, math, science center, CACC, uh, and, uh, dual enrollment. So that's why over here on the average class size, that's why we don't have that. There's a lot going on there. Um, averaging it, a- averaging it out for the current number, this is what class sizes would look like. So without school of choice and everyone remaining, you would see, uh, you know, about fourteen kids, uh, per class in kindergarten. This is with current staffing, with current staffing, uh, nineteen at first grade, twenty-one at second grade, a- and so on and so forth. You guys can, can see those numbers. So this is well under capacity. Um, we are in a position in the elementaries where there is less space available. In middle school and high school particularly, if we have a larger number, we can hire more teachers, we can make that space available, we can arrange for classrooms, things like that. Elementaries, we don't have that. That's, that's not an option. So what, what I would suggest is in grades K through five, we, we look at, um, particularly when you see fourth and fifth grade here of having one seat available and seven seats available, we would, we would look at, those would be grades that we would want to be awfully limited. When I say awfully limited, I mean five to ten available, um, total. And, and that would be prioritizing, um, siblings and, uh, students who had already attended Penfield schools but had left. So you would leave a few seats for them. That would be the exception. Now here where you see, uh, you know, kindergarten through third grade where it's at least twenty seats available, again, like I said, on average minus kindergarten, you're talking about five to ten has been our average. Um, so really, it's, it's, it's hard to talk with, uh, what it's next year's gonna look like with, with, uh, COVID, if it's gonna be uh, the same, uh, or better, and, and I, worse is always an option. It can always get worse, but let's hope that's not the case, right? Um, so again, uh, what I would say is with any recommendation from me, it would be we go unlimited grades six through twelve, and, uh, we, we look at enrollment for grades K through five and have some grades limited, and, and those that we can do unlimited, you do that because like I mentioned, there's some real cons to doing limited as far as how that works throughout the summer.
Thank you, Trevor. I just want to apologize. I don't have, that's not part of the attachment, the module of your screen there, so we weren't able to see that.
Right.
Gotcha.
I have a quick-
Yep.
If we're ready. Um-
Absolutely.
On that current enrollment, and then a ro- enrollment available, have we considered in-district kids that are not attending right now?
Yes, so this is, uh, looking at who's currently enrolled and attending. We do have some students who, now, if we have students, I'll just tell you right now, if we have a student who we haven't seen in, you know, like, over a month or two, we, we've taken them out of the count. But if we have seen them in the last month, even if we've only seen them one time in the last month, I, I left them in here. Um, so, so those students are there. So if they've been gone for multiple months, then yes, I did remove them, and their seat would come into this enrollment available section.
Uh, t- this is Dana, Trevor. Just to add to that, that question, um, as you, as you said at the beginning of your presentation, that we did lose, um, some of the kids to, to other schools, um, based on, uh, our choice of virtual, um, do we have, uh, or do you have available approximately all of those students? I mean, like, off the top of your head, or is that something that you could provide? Because I'm sure next year there are up camp, families that sent their kids to, um, outlying districts that were in-person that would, would, would be coming back if, if we're gonna offer, you know, five days a week next year.
Yeah, it's, it's a hard one to predict out. Uh, I can certainly talk to the numbers we've lost, but the, the truth is, is I think next year is gonna probably stipulate for a lot of families whether they come back to Penfield or, or not. Um, so, you know, I, I, in a normal circumstance, I mean, everything is five days and, and there's no health risk and, and all those things. I think you could account for a majority of those, of those families and students coming back. Um, but we don't know that, of course. And then you, the other thing that you run into is families that left that, you know, say, you know what, transition is hard. We just did this one year. I'm not gonna do it again next year. We're pretty happy with this move. We loved Penfield, but we're, we're also happy here. Um, so that's, that's the thing that we, we run into. Uh, it's, it's a lot of variables. So, um, it's, you know, like I said, I can get you hard numbers as far as what we lost. I can't, I can't bring you speculation as far as, you know, what we're gonna get back because there, there just are so many variables, and that's new for me. I'm gonna tell you, I'm pretty bold with this, uh, from year to year. Like I said, I mean, I can tell you, you know, we, we usually come out with a net twenty-five to thirty kids with, with open, uh, unlimited enrollment, and this year I won't do that. I can't. You know, I don't know if we're gonna have a nice bounce back with the families that left or, or not because, you know, of, of COVID. So that's, that is a very difficult one. What I can say is, is, you know, we lost nine percent of our kids, um, this past year. Um, it was awfully tough, and I can tell you it's grades six through twelve. We have space available. We can make this work if we, uh, need to hire another teacher, make another classroom, we can do that. And in grades K five, I'm a little bit more conservative about that and saying we need to be a little more limited, um, in those grade levels where there's less space because, um, you know, there's less space. We, we don't want to run into having classrooms of, of thirty plus in, in grades K five.
Absolutely. No reason for any of our teachers to be teaching thirty students in one classroom.
Right.
In this projection, are we considering with this COVID situation and the lack of education some of our students have received, uh, the, the possibility that there's gonna be more students held back in the lower grades, higher grades, you know, failure rates are, so, you know, so like what I'm thinking that's also difficult, you know, if you, if you have a first grader and you do not feel they received what they needed for first grade, are they gonna keep, are, are current students going to be held back? And that's going to create another whole scenario as far as room, you know? Maybe, maybe the-
I've heard people talking, choosing, yeah, to repeat and agree.
There's, there's a-
Go, go ahead, Trevor.
Okay, so, um, there's, we, we typically refer to the life retention scale, which is a, it's a survey, uh, based on the, the child as to rate their candidacy for retention. Um, it's never a recommended thing. It's, uh, honestly, it's pretty hard to be a retention candidate, and, and, uh, the grade level that you see that most often is kindergarten. Um, so what I will say is, is I, I understand what you're saying. I think that there's probably a lot of kids that are on, on the same boat, so to speak. So I don't, I don't see, um, just the general loss of, of learning being a, an indicator to, to hold students back unless it was more extreme. Um, and, and certainly that would be a, a good reason to look at that, to see their candidacy for retention. Now kindergarten, um, what I will say is, is I moved all our kindergartners on up on this projection. That's not gonna happen. In kindergarten, we do see, uh, greater retention, and, uh, you know, you could probably account for fifteen easy. Uh, and, and, you know, both, uh, Ms. Taylor and, and Ms. Coats could probably give you a better indicator, a better projection than me on that one, how we're looking, uh, moving forward. But, uh, yeah, certainly, that, that's, that's one grade level where I think you would see an impact, whereas the other grade levels not so much.
And we use standards at the K five level as we look at grades for the actual six, twelve, and looking at standards is, has the child met enough of those standards in order to pass forward, uh, be promoted? But as you mentioned, yeah, there are some parents who are concerned that my child receive enough, um, um, learning to, they, are they gonna be successful at the next football?
Isn't there a lot of placement right now in going around, being tossed around about parent choice for retention? If that were to pass, we would, could see a lot more numbers. I'm familiar with the light scale, and that's hard to hold it back with the light scale. There's a lot of qualifications.
It is.
Putting it up to any parent who wants to, that could really mess up his numbers.
Right. Yeah, a- and, and the other thing that we're gonna speak to as well is, and, and of course, as a school, it's working with parents, but, you know, we, we want to, we would refer, we would recommend, uh, opportunities for additional hours instruction, which would be after school and, and through the summer. And that's something that we're working on right now as well to see what we can do to, uh, ha- have some extension going into the summer to, uh, account for loss of learning. And, and those would be things that I would, I would personally, if I was talking to a parent, that I would say, you know, we, we really want to avoid that unless, unless there's strong indicators, and, and Sarah said that, well, the light's retention scale is kind of usually a little stacked against retention unless, unless it's just screaming, this is gonna be beneficial and helpful to the child.
Gary, you also have information based on that third grade, um, reading law, the third grade reading, but you were going to say something earlier?
Yeah, I was going to chime in and Trevor hit it that, you know, it's in our best interest to put interventions in early like summer school, um, summer enrichments like that. But we also have other data that we use, um, that we collect three times a year. We have individual reading plans, um, called IRIPs. Um, some of you have, have certainly heard of those. Um, and then we have our NWA testing that we do, um, that actually supports those IRIPs. We have Fontis and Pennell, um, reading data and we capture that data for kids K five. So yeah, we're, we're communicating and watching and, and I think we're going to have a good recommendation for those summer supports that I'm going to predict will extend into the fall. Um, everything at the school testing conference this year and my work with the state has said that it will take us eighteen to twenty-four months, um, as a nation to recover from some of the losses students saw primarily, believe it or not, in mathematics. It, it wasn't as much in literacy with the, the early indicators that we're seeing. So, um, I like what we're doing. I like, uh, the direction that, that Trevor's going and that the principals are looking at their data. Um, but we have to keep monitoring those results. And I think we've got an okay plan. It's good.
We may not see a lot of that for a year or two either, you know, with these kids and their.
It's lost throughout everyone. Yeah. It's just lost throughout everyone. So it's hard to say this, this child ahead of this child and everybody behind.
Yeah, it's not, it's not just, uh, a Penfield, uh, learning curve and, and where are we? It's actually across the county, the state, across the nation right now.
But as Penfield, we want to do the very best we can. And, and the numbers there that we're about to approve or deny, I think will make a big difference for these students.
Trevor, I have a couple of questions regarding the numbers. I just want to make sure I'm understanding your data, right? On the, uh, on the first spreadsheet, the, uh, the fall count enrollment trend, um, twenty twenty-one, two thousand thirteen students, but then school of choice, eight hundred and sixty-seven students. Uh, is that a school of choice, the eight hundred and sixty-seven in the two thousand thirteen number or in addition to?
Yeah. So no, that's, that's within that number. So, um, for example, the bottom number there, two thousand one hundred and one, eight hundred seventy-six students of that two thousand one hundred and one were, were school of choice that year.
Okay. And then, but on the other sheet that we didn't have as an attachment, at the bottom, am I correct to say it was nineteen hundred, one thousand nine hundred students that are in district without school of choice?
No, this, this would include the current school of choice. So the one thousand nine hundred eleven would be to say, if you're school of choice, you're school of choice. You get to remain in Penfield. This would say, no other school of choice may enter, um, with, without this resolution. Good, good questions.
Final to crack you, uh, coin toss. Uh, we, we have a bunch going on. Um, the biggest thing that I can ask, Trevor, we're going to, we're going to take your, you know, or I'm going to look at your professional advice and just, uh, just try to, uh, advocate as much as possible for our K five.
Yes.
And keeping our class size, K five, twenty-six at the most. Uh, is, is there any way to reduce that?
School of choice.
Yeah.
Well.
That's what we're.
I mean, the, they're, they're, the one thing that we could do right now is, um, for example, you know, in kindergarten, we, we had seven sections of kindergarten this past year and, and that seventh section ended up being a, a young fives program. I'm calling it kindergarten because it's kindergarten, but it was also young, young, young fives. Um, K ready is what we call it here at Penfield. So for example, if we said, you know, we would rather have six sections of kindergarten and use that seventh section for, for an overflow, so to speak. Um, you know, that's something that we could look at, but then you'd be greatly reducing your, your kindergarten numbers. You would go limited, um, with that. And then you would also, uh, you know, run the chance of not having a young five K ready program, which would, which would not be great, you know? So those are, those are some of the tougher choices that you come across. But what I will say is with this resolution, we'll, we'll absolutely work with our K five principals and, and say, you know, what, what's the best option here? You know, I'm, I'm perfectly okay in K five going, you know, recommending limited. Um, obviously, you know, there's a couple of grades there that we already know are going to be limited. So that's fourth and fifth grade. So for grades K three, I would work with, uh, Ms. Newbecker, Ms. Taylor and Ms. Coats and, and just say, you know, what's, what you're thinking here, what, you know, we got to look at staffing and, and keeping numbers as low as possible. So, so we might have an additional limited section there, but, um, you know, right now off the numbers, it's looking pretty safe, uh, for unlimited for those grades even.
And, and to answer the question, there's thirteen from K twelve. If you took ten kids and for say each grade level, say it's a hundred and twenty, that's going to be one hundred and thirty, right? If you took ten. That's what happened the year before I got here when it was a hundred and forty-four and it was one point something million dollars that the budget had to make up for.
Right.
So yeah, the numbers could be left, the lower the numbers. But then there's something to be an impact on the actual operations of the district.
Right.
So instead of, uh, instead of the revenue being twenty-two million, which is about what it is now, the revenue would drop to be twenty-one, which means now that extra million or eight hundred thousand has to come from somewhere.
Right. Cause that would have been in eighteen, nineteen and Gina probably has that number, but yeah, I want to say it was the better part of a million that we were, were under from what we had the previous year, just with that one year. So.
So can we, can the board, I'm not asking for right now, but can we be sent for K through fifth, how many current classrooms were operating? And I know some of those are virtual, so maybe they can say, you know, five in person, two virtual or whatever.
Yeah, I think it's the actual sheet, Trevor, that you were showing.
It is. I, I have the total sections there, but, but what Dawn is saying is that there is a breakdown of, of virtual and in-person in there and that's not accounted for. I didn't break it down by that. So for example, there's seven sections of kindergarten. I believe it's six and one, one section of virtual and for, um, first grade, I think it's another seven sections, again, six and one, second grade, six sections, third, fourth and fifth, each have six sections with one of those sections being virtual. So, uh, that's, that's, that's the breakdown. It is accounted for there in the average, but again, because we don't know what's going to be virtual and what's not, um, that, that may vary a little bit.
Yeah, I don't see a couple of your charts on my board docs.
So what you.
They only have the first, they only have the first page.
Yeah.
And the, uh, next two that you were sharing.
So we'll have to reshare that. Yeah, it's, it's, I broke the spreadsheet into tabs here on the bottom. So yeah, I'm hearing that you, you didn't see the additional tabs and, and we'll make sure we get that reshared with you. So you have an opportunity to go through that.
Yeah, I mean, here right now, there's no tabs.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. You, you just have the front page. I get it. I just, yeah, we'll have to get that shared again.
Yeah.
I would, I would just be interested in knowing, you know, how many kindergarten classrooms, first grade classrooms, second, in making this choice. That would help me.
Yeah. And Trevor, is that the second sheet that requests that?
So I'll, I'll go ahead and present again. So you know what to expect when you do get this shared. Um, this, this first tab is what everybody has. And then down here you should, what you should have seen is, is different tabs. So down right here on the second tab, you're going to see projected fall with no school of choice. Okay. And then.
You, you mean no additional school of choice?
No additional school of choice. Correct. Better wording. Um, now what I can do is I can add an extra column, um, to show you the number of sections. Uh, what, what I did here is actually when you say one fifty-four divided by twenty-two, that's going to give you your current number of sections. So again, I'll just make an extra column for you, but if you just want to know right now how that works. So one fifty-four divided by twenty-two is seven sections. Um, so you have, really it's seven, seven, six, 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 six across all the way to fifth grade. And then of course in six through twelve, it looks a little different. So typically we have six sections in each grade. The only exceptions are kindergarten, first grade, if that helps. That, that's an easy way to say it, right?
When he says sections, give me classes. Yeah, give me classes. That's what you're asking.
Yep, correct.
Classrooms right now?
Yep. One of those being a young.
Virtual.
One of those is virtual.
One of those.
One, one virtual. Hey, that's just things that the board don't know. So when we're thinking about making these decisions, it would just be nice to know how many in-person classrooms and how many virtual, you know, and are you doing this based on the way it is now as far as with virtual? Or is this an all in-person viewpoint?
What I, what I have there is all in-person. So if you, if you take virtual, if you have one virtual section, you're going to reduce that number even more so.
See, and that's what I'm saying. So.
But I can't predict how many.
Right now, we have the amount of kindergartners enrolled for seven classroom sections. But in person, we only have six classrooms.
Yeah, because we want to, want to create.
It's seven.
Jerry's saying seven.
You have seven in person?
We're, you know, we're talking about next year when we'll have a separate virtual option that won't tie up our instructors. Is that correct?
That's right. Even if we're looking at hiring so that we're able to have the seven sections, because we still want the seven sections and the six and the six and the six, even if that means hiring teachers to do the virtual.
But do we have a classroom?
Well, if they're virtual.
We don't need the.
Because they're set. But we have actual seven classrooms for kindergarten right now. Four, say it's four at Purdy and three at North Penn, or maybe it's the other way around.
It's four at Purdy, three at North Penn.
Yeah.
We don't have any four sections at North.
So Trevor, even the, even the virtual classrooms have physical classrooms still to them. Cause I.
Currently, yes.
Okay.
Because there's a teacher that is out of the set.
But what Kevin's saying is you wouldn't necessarily have to do that because it is virtual, obviously. So that, that does, that does speak to potential space that, you know, we don't normally account for.
Can I get your spot? How, what do you think of K through five with twenty-eight in that classroom?
I mean, I've taught fifth grade with thirty-two kids is the biggest class I've ever had. And I, I mean, it's tricky, but you do it like, um, I'd say my perfect number is twenty-four kids.
Oh, that's what I'm saying. With the.
The Michigan averages?
What? Yeah, there's a Michigan average.
Let me try to think.
Well, that's more of a nineteen point.
Okay.
Because they take into account some of the, um, um, native schools that have fewer kids in those classes because they're, and I wouldn't say elite, but they have certain funding.
Correct.
That allow them to catch smaller classroom size.
Is there a recommendation?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're working on. We're working on.
They're all for the recommendation.
Yeah, these are all the recommendations. So pretty much what Trevor's sharing is these are the recommendation is there's a K five and then go limited and then six, twelve where it's unlimited. However, Trevor, did I say that correct?
We would look at it, we would look at a grade level to grade level K through five and, and determine which grades are going to be limited. Like I said, there's two right now, right off the bat, without talking to Ms. Newbecker, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Coats, you, you're, we're going to be limited. It's a matter of how limited. And then, and then for the other grade levels, K through three, that's where we would want to have more discussion of how limited we want to go or if we can go unlimited, depending on the space that's available. Um, the, the vote for Monday is just if we have school of choice or not. It's not about if it's limited, if it's, it's, no, is it, are you having school of choice? Yes or no? That's, that's what the resolution is for. That a couple of times would not come out until after spring break is what we're talking about. So we would, we would use that time. Um, we would also again, work with our principals to make sure that, you know, we, we determine what space is there with the latest, absolute latest numbers.
And, and after the resolution, does the board have a say in the numbers or is that something that's done behind the scenes with you and Jerry?
That's, that's working with Kevin who works with you.
And you know, with that in mind, as a board, I just hope everyone remembers that, um, there are a lot of children K through fifth that have experienced a setback due to COVID. So for the teacher's sake, yes, but more for the child's sake and the availability that the teacher is going to be spreading their self. I just, that number is really, really important.
Absolutely.
Uh, Jeff, this is Dana. I, I just want to add to what Dawn said. I com- I completely agree one hundred percent. Um, unfortunately, um, teachers are asked sometimes to get classes that are too big. Uh, when my son was a, a fourth grader, um, he got put into a classroom at Dunlap with, I think it was thirty-two kids. And that year I can guarantee, I can tell you if it wasn't for my husband and I, he would have learned absolutely nothing because it was, the teacher was too, too, too far just spread out and it was so difficult because it was her first year in a cla- back in a classroom and it was, it was so hard on all of the students in that classroom. Um, so limiting those numbers and, um, and I agree with Sarah that it's, it, it, it can be done, but twenty-five is such a nicer number.
Yeah, it's, I mean, and I, I, again, like I said, I mean, we can, we can absolutely do limiting in K through five. I mean, Kevin is saying that too, that the tricky thing though, of course, is, is we really, we don't know, um, how those students come in next year. I mean, to, to predict the move in, move out and, and net, uh, school of choice with, with all the variables we have with COVID and, and not knowing what next year looks like. It's a tough thing. Um, so I guess the only risk that we would run, of course, and, and with, with board's blessing and Kevin's blessing, it helps too, is if we say, yeah, we're going to, we're going to go limited, you know, a little more conservatively, uh, K five, then you run the risk of, you know, not having enough students, um, where we're saying, why are we running these as separate classrooms? But again, you know, next year we might be more willing to do that with it still being a COVID year.
Trevor, when we did the limited a few years ago, when the board went limited, um, maybe you could give us the information, was that the junior high and high school or was that all across the board? Was that just entry limited?
I can tell you exactly what we had one moment. Um, we ran kindergarten, forty-three sections, second grade, seventeen sections. Or excuse me, let me start over. Kindergarten, forty-three students, um, we, we accepted, uh, seventeen, we advertised for second grade, twenty-five, we advertised for fourth grade, ten for eleventh grade and twenty-four for twelfth grade and all other grade levels were closed. And we did not get any of those numbers except for kindergarten. Kindergarten, we had a waitlist of about seventeen kindergartners that did not make it, that applied. We could not take. So we had seventeen kindergartners that couldn't come in. And then the remaining grade levels, we didn't have anywhere close to that. However, because we advertised early in the spring, we had all summer getting calls from, from families that did want in. We had families that, uh, you know, moved out and wanted to return to Penfield. We had families who one child got in, but a sibling couldn't get in. Uh, it's a very difficult thing when you, when you limit such or when you advertise so earlier. I mean, it's, it really is. Um, you're going to, you're going to hear a lot about that. I mean, uh, on any year, but on that year particularly, we, we really took a lot of calls and a lot of hard stories.
So Trevor, I thank you. I, I think you've heard our, you know, our definite concerns. Uh, I think we're all on, on page of that of, of, you know, doing our, our best to keep the, the K five, um, limited cla- uh, class size.
Absolutely.
Again, this is asking to, uh, move this to, uh, the next week's meeting to approve, to open for school of choice or not. Uh, and as, as Trevor explained, will as a board in, in, right, April? Right, April, Trevor?
Uh, a- a- after spring break is when we would put out that first advertisement officially opening school of choice. If, if it's passed on Monday.
And if we voted not to do school of choice on Monday, out of district students that are here now will remain. We're just talking about additional.
Correct.
That's correct.
You got it.
That's correct. That's correct.
Correct. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you, Trevor.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Trevor.
Thank you.
Right. At this point, I move for a five-minute recess. Can I get a second?
Nice second.
Thank you. Five-minute recess, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Dana, Craig, are you ready back?
I'm here.
Craig, are you with us?
Craig raises his hand, so I'm going with yes.
Thank you, Craig. All right, moving on. Uh, three-point oh by policy updates.
So Miola sends us the, uh, revised and updated policies, and it happens in February, and then we bring it to the board in March, and it happens in September, we bring it to the board in October. So those policies are all sent out to all the members. If, uh, there was a sheet asking if anyone had questions, and as I looked at the sheet today, I didn't see any questions, so uh, this is considered a first read, which means that it comes back at the, uh, next meeting as the second read. And then it comes to the April meeting as a consent agenda item. So if there's members who have read through and you have questions about one of the policies, now would be the time, if you have a question about any of those policies.
I don't have a question about those policies, but I do have a question about how we went from individual committees to committee of the whole. And the policy committee was one of those. And we have always read these out loud as a first read.
Right.
At the committee of the whole meetings. And I don't know why that was decided to change.
Yeah, so my understanding, it wasn't read until I got here out loud.
Yes, it was, and.
In, with the previous superintendent.
In a separate committee.
Right.
Right, but now we're a committee of the whole.
So if this is, um, the board, my understanding is we're in a new year, so was not going to go through with reading each of those policies. But if the board wants to go through and reread each one of those, we can go back to doing that, because this is one of those changes that, uh, I thought I included with reading when I started reading. I didn't know that was something that was being done with, with the superintendent.
Yeah, it was.
At the actual board meeting.
We had, um, a policy committee.
Right.
Which our superintendent was a part of. And we read them aloud in there, and then we came to the board.
So do, did the board want to go back to reading each one of the policies?
Honestly, it didn't matter, I, we discussed, honestly, we discussed with twelve or thirteen policies to kind of do our new diligence for instead of reading them out loud. Um, if we would like them read, um, I can ask, we can ask to have them read next week if you want, if we'd like them read aloud, absolutely.
Well, we would have to take a consensus, right, of the board.
Don't have to.
Right.
I'm asking you if you, if you.
I, I'm going to have to do my research and the best practice before I make a decision whether I say yes or no. Because when those policies were read out loud, there was a discussion if everyone was comfortable with it or not. And then you move to the next policy, same thing. And then at the following meeting, which is the second read, I mean, why would you call it a read if you're not reading them? But the second read of the policy, it also gives the community, it's not just the board, it gives the community to say, oh, they read that policy, and I, I want to ask a question about that policy as well. So it's just a communication thing, in my opinion, that it was a practice and, and now this is the first time the practice is not being practiced, but.
Point for transparency, should we list these where the public can see them?
Yeah.
The Google Docs.
Yeah.
Full cursing, more docs, all attachments, explaining reasons.
Oh, the po- the, the policies are the up-and-coming policies, like that the board was just shared.
Right.
Are those?
Those are not.
Right, and that's my point. That's why you have a first read, and then you have a second read, and then the approval.
I think it was sharing them for transparency.
Mm-hmm.
Craig typed in the comments that, in his opinion, that's not an efficient use of the time.
Which is what we were gonna, I, I, yeah.
Well, that.
So we were all presented this, and as, as an attachment last Thursday. We're able to print them off, we're able to read them. Um, we've been given a, uh, source to ask and, and have questions, or, excuse me, ask questions, and then be brought to, to a board meeting.
Okay.
Uh, by all means, if anybody would like them read out loud, we can have them.
Like I said, the main reason I would do that is for our community to have an opportunity for input before approving them.
Instance, it, based on what family shared, so if we actually share those with the community, and there can, um, there's a question they may have about the policy in the first read or the second read, they could read through those. Uh, just put it out there so that they have an opportunity to see what possible changes are there.
That'd be fine.
Just for transparency, I, I think, you know, instead of, I, I think it's about the extra time.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
We will, we will post them, um, to where the actual, um, public can look at what the changes are being recommended that the board are going through a first read, and then we'll post them again if there is a second read, and the board says, yeah, there was a question about one that we're thinking we want to change, then there's that discussion that occurred. Then when it's a second read, we'll post those off them.
Then we'll go, we'll go one for one, okay.
By the time it goes to the consent, yeah.
So if, if we're good with that, instead of, because actually next week could be the second read, and you could vote, you would have to wait until.
That's correct.
So why don't, why don't we agree to that? Why don't we read them? We'll, we'll post them. Um, the community to see, and let's read them next week. And then meanwhile, we have a, a Google Doc forum for any questions. Um, so Kevin can, you know, bring those answers to those questions to us next week. Yeah, we'll just, one by one. I see there's no questions, there is some questions, Google Doc.
Right.
Does anyone have anything now? And we'll move on to the next one. We'll, we'll read it, go ahead and read them aloud next week. Oh. The change, three to change that. We're gonna read what, this is only recommended.
Right.
This isn't from Kevin, this isn't from this, this, this is, this is from Miola, which is our policy, what we use.
Right.
They come out every spring and every fall with here's our suggestions. We don't have to accept any of them, we don't, we can approve them all in, in, you know, and everything in between. These are just suggestions from Miola. It's our job to present them to the board on, these are the suggestions from Miola. What would you like to do at, at the board, right?
And there are some suggestions that Miola says is law, because the law has changed. But then again, the board still, which they wouldn't just not say, we're not gonna go with the, with the legal ease of it all, but yeah.
Right, I think Jackie's done some, some Crayola uh, coloring for us.
Mm-hmm.
To help us, this is what we have, this is what's being asked or recommended to change, or this is the older policy that, that we're bringing in. I don't think there was there was a couple.
Yeah, the, uh, title time.
So, everyone's agreeance with that, we'll, we'll consider this the first read, we've, we've had them. Next week will be the second read, we will read them all out and answer any questions that via the Google Doc, or any questions that we may have in the board, but if we could get those terms in prior.
I would, I would also, um, ask the question that unless there's a question about the policy itself, then why read it, that policy? Especially if we're getting ready to.
For the community.
Well, if you're getting ready to share with the community, look at the policy.
I'm sorry.
Well, we're getting ready to share with the community what that policy is, right?
Correct.
And so I could say policy fifty-four twenty-three, and there were no questions from the board based on this policy. Want to go ahead and just read that policy, or read out the ones that actually have questions on it?
I think we're being, we're asked for everyone, everyone revise, you or not, every policy that we're going to uh, table to vote in April.
Yeah.
To be read aloud.
Yeah, for a second read, please.
Got it. Thank you. Awesome. Anything else?
I would like to ask a question, uh, on that, Jeff, if unless there's a, a state law that requires a full reading, I think this is really a board decision, a full board decision. Uh, I, I don't think that i- if we're gonna be sharing with the community, and we're gonna be, and the changes are gonna be shared. I think that this is really, unless it's required by law, I think this is really a, a, a vote of the board that's required.
That could go on next week's agenda before the, um, a vote before the rate, the rate or the approval of the policies.
That's, that sounds fine to me.
Thanks, Greg. Anything else on policies? All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Three-point oh-six CISD budget, uh, Kevin?
Yes, um, and Gina, we have the budget that came from the, uh, CISD, I know it comes through every year. Would you, uh, please share out about the budget and information?
Yes, so the, um, ISD each year, um, brings their operating budget to all their local districts to approve. And, um, this is basically a formality that the ISD has to, um, have. And then I am assuming if there was questions or concerns that we had regarding their budget, we could then, um, take that information to them. But you'll see, you have the attached pages, looks, um, their budget presentation looks very similar to the one that I present to you when we approve our budgets as far as the actual breakdown of revenue and expenditures by the different categories in the dollar amounts. Um, and on this one, what they're asking for your approval is the twenty-one, twenty-two preliminary budget. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't.
No.
Oh, the, oh, the last column, okay. See, Dana and Craig again, I, I can't see answers, go ahead and ask if you guys do have anything. Um, anyone else have any budgets, Brandon? Haven't given anything to.
Nope, just the fact that it is a, uh, uh, budget that they just want all the local school districts to have their boards both on.
Approved.
Approved. Yeah.
So if there's no other questions, this will be moved to next week?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Feel like I'm yelling. So, um, wait, I'll wait.
Three-point oh-seven warning plan. Um, this was asked to be brought to a board meeting, uh, for some clarification, more than, more than anything. Um, some questions on why the, this survey, um, why the survey was, was just sent out, um, some speculation, um, talk, um, so Kevin helped me out here, the, uh, the point first most, first and foremost for the survey was back in January when the board decided for the, uh, return to learn plan that we're currently in. Uh, we made sure that all of our students had the option to return for third trimester or fourth marking period, six to twelve, fourth marking period. Um, that was the intentions of, the main intentions of the survey was to give our families, um, that option to return to the classroom. We are also using. We are also using. That. Information um to see exactly what the virtual was still gonna look for. And yes, we've we've tried to. Uh go through about every option possible to try to get more days for everyone. Um for virtual and for uh in person, um. There was some some talk of of moving some virtual later in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Um so kind of correct me if I'm wrong, we we've kind of ran out of of options other than a. Third-party source for virtual. And I don't think anybody really thinks that's a a great idea.
Correct, because if they're like changing schools again. Uh which will be another major change for um our students who are already virtual. And having that changed here at the last marking period. Is not uh is not. Going to be, it's not gonna be supported by research-based, it's like taking kids back another step. Um yeah, so. And then that was part of the survey was to ask parents, how many of you that have your kids who are virtual that want your kids to come back in person? That was the biggest picture because they want to give them, this is their last opportunity, so let's see if you want this opportunity. The elementary K five principals, they are um their re- their data. Was the same as the high school, there's some eighteen percent that said, I want my child to come back. There's two hundred and forty students in the high school, a hundred and forty in the. Uh six eight and those were the uh. You know, still three days a week for those students, so we were looking to see if there was an oppor- opportunity to go five days a week. And without taking away more hours from the virtual students and then changing, it was it was not going to work. Plus, it was gonna be another change, so yes, that data reflected that. They'll, they do get the opportunity to come back. The K five principals are talking with every parent that wanted their child to come back. And they're trying to find the opportunity for them to come back to in-person. However, because it's K five is elementary. There are certain teachers that can teach um all subjects in elementary that you can't do in secondary. So some of those parents were given the option that their child could come back in person, but it may be in a different building. It may be a- as far as K two, as far as K two. And the um same work. Has continued with our three-five building with that principal and her assistant. And those teachers are trying to say, you wanted this opportunity to come back, so that's why we sent that survey out.
So just to touch base again, um. Well, we have one, a synchronous camera in the classroom, which doesn't seem to be very. Well-supported. That would be our our only other option, rather than a third party for five days virtual, five days uh for in-person.
Right.
Um so what? We know of this third party already, uh example in E twenty twenty, there's there's more out.
Right.
Um so we've asked Kevin to continue to look into this and get and get down to finer details, um. When. We go forward. Starting to discuss uh twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Mm hmm.
This.
Yes.
To try to try and get. Ultimately.
To return in the five days a week for all the twelve students. Which goes back to the actual funds that the state is offering to where we can actually look at hiring teachers to do nothing but virtual. And bring all of our other teachers back to the classroom.
Incorrect, if I'm wrong, there's an overlap here anyways, maybe I'm wrong, but one of the superintendent's goals. Is to develop for the twenty twenty-one uh a virtual regardless of.
Correct, and that comes up in next month with my um informal update.
Okay. Absolutely, I think that will be the possibility of seeing if it's in the budget to hire teachers of our own.
Yeah.
Yes, you're teaching our own and having, you know, an option, um. Uh although we also touched on the possibility of of either reaching out to um. Local. School districts, see if maybe have a collaboration there or C I S D wanting to do some sort of a collaboration there.
Absolutely.
So Kevin will bring those those plans to us, um. So uh. Basically. Wording wise, uh January when we discussed and voted on where we're at right now for in-person. Um there was no end date put on it, so there's no um. Action needed unless anyone is of objection in objection of changing our current. Format.
I think for the benefit of our staff and our s- our student stability, you know. Leaving that stability in place is very, very beneficial. Although we do need to. Um. As soon as possible, share. With them what it's going to look like for fall of twenty twenty-one, so they have plenty of time. To plan, I don't think letting them know in August, you know, a a week or two beforehand is. Taking the students or the staff into consideration, the parents, um. So hopefully leaving things the way they are would um allow more time to. Um complete. A plan for next fall. So we're not letting everyone know at the last minute.
And a part of my informal next month is to actually bring you the first look at what that will look like.
Okay.
And then get some support, some reasonable assurances that when we say we're gonna hire. Teachers above the teachers that we already have, so we can do virtual. That I can explain and then have the support of the board to say, okay, now come back when you have your formal um. Uh update. And then that formal update would be, yeah, we're locking it in, and that's actually July.
So am I hearing speculation there that we might be able to hire our own staff to?
Yeah.
To tend to our own students?
If we can, if we can get out ahead of it now and start with that posting and hiring. Then we should be able to have five days a week for all of our K twelve. And then be able to bring people back and hire teachers to do that virtual piece. And down the road, if we lose teachers for retirement in or. Other reasons for not being able to retain them, then we'll be able to fill in because we'll have those teachers.
Oh.
That I bring you next month.
We just gotta live in second.
Yeah, yes. So yes, no, I don't see any answers.
Um so yes, rest assured, um. Where we're at right now is is where we'll be at for the rest of the year, um. For all of us. So. Everyone relax and go enjoy spring break and.
Come back to work.
And and I can't.
I'd like to say a little.
Teachers and staff for everything that they've. Gone and moving and everything, so hopefully this'll this'll ease some some stress on them and. I find a plan for for something under this meeting, so.
Yeah.
Um we've been doing pretty good um up to this point. Um last week we started kind of a a rough patch in our. Uh. Should say more or less quarantine rate.
Yes.
Um. So I I'll I'll touch on that a little bit in the um. Board comments.
Mm hmm.
So if anyone has anything else. For Kevin?
Mm hmm.
On the. Learning plan. Awesome. That is said and done, no action required. All right, four point oh one, comments from the public? Nobody, all right, thank you. Uh moving right on, five point oh one, comments from the superintendent?
Yeah, I would um just want to echo what we started to go into a few minutes ago, that there are staff and there are parents, students in this community. That um when it comes to a positive case that we have with students. We are not um taking it lightly. The communications that I'm sending out to board members and letting them know that. We have to um take that safety protocol and there's steps and procedures that we have to take. We do the contact tracing, after contact tracing, then we get the support from the health department based on what we do and our next steps. So yes, we've had some pretty interesting situations to occur. From uh bus to where we have, you know, students that ride the bus, they're on the bus for fifteen minutes or more. Uh the driver, everybody having the situation of having a quarantine. It is not the most exciting thing to do is to try to put staff in place to make these phone calls. It is not a um and as a parent, I can only imagine you getting a call. I was calling a parent about joining us for. For the um bond updates and getting in and when I called her and told her who I was. There was a change in her voice that she. Thought that I was calling her saying, your child is about to be quarantined. But once I kept talking to her and explained what it was and she, you could hear the the relief in her voice, it it is a very intense time. Uh again, I'd just say that the staff, the district staff, the board, that we appreciate the support and understanding. That it is a process. It, there's no blueprint, I know I've said that before, but I have to continue to say it, there's no blueprint on how to do this work. What we're doing is we're trying to do the best that we can. For our community, parents and kids. Uh and staff, of course. So I just uh appreciate that support and I'm just gonna leave it at that. Mister President?
Thank you, sir. Uh five point oh uh five point oh, room log notes, uh there's some attachment, or there is an attachment?
Mm hmm.
Anything you wanna touch on there, Kevin, or?
Well, for the most part, I'm sending out the e-blasts that are coming from um our uh legal counsel. And that kind of breaks down a lot of this information that we're reading. But this is an extended reading, we talked about the notes, but those e-blasts are really uh helpful with trying to do question and answers.
Yes, so we've, this is an attachment, we all have it, um. Kind of touches on some hearsay.
Mm hmm.
Around really the nation.
Yes.
Not necessarily Michigan.
Yes.
Um. I don't want to get into.
Yeah.
The speculation, but uh you know, um. Talks of exactly what we just said it uh or talked about earlier, and that's tended to ours, our students that uh. There are that have that have fell behind.
Mm hmm.
Uh so good read there, good read there, if uh if you haven't had a chance to read that yet. Uh six point oh one, comments from the board? You want to have any comments? There are other people.
We know you've got comments.
Uh so I I touched on it earlier, um as I started moving to to board comments, um. Everyone, I I wanna I wanna thank everyone, I wanna thank everyone in this room for joining us, you know, our here today. Um some of us haven't been able to meet in in public before, uh let alone meet Kevin in public before. Um so uh I I think this was a great evening, um. A couple joined us, Abby got tied up at work, um she wasn't able to join us tonight, but I thank everyone. Tammy, thank you for setting up our our meeting tonight, um. Thank you, Kevin, Jackie, um Jackie is our our COVID. What?
Quarantine, quarantine. Come here, quarantine.
Uh uh for not only the the information getting out to uh to parents. Uh but also advocating for our our students, um. There's been a couple slippery situations, um. Recently, some one-offs, as we may call it, and and the health department even referred to it at, you know, as that, um. But um but I just, I want to thank you guys, I also want to thank Brett Steele for for advocating for our students. Um and making sure that the that the right process was was done, it was done correctly, um. That is that, um I want to remind. High school, Tuesdays and Thursdays are after school. Uh El. Tom, you're still in here? Can I add, do you mind, do you mind, Tom? Are we still doing the Tuesday, Thursday? Out by for school?
Yes, we are, Tuesday and Thursday till four o'clock.
You're a man, Tom. Oh, Tony's still here too.
Yeah, you were telling.
I didn't see you down there, um. I I don't know the exact digs and the and the details, I know we're getting the uh. The newsletters from each building, um so by all means, parents, if you need to reach out. Uh please start reaching out to your teachers and let us know what we can do to help. Um with that said, I think I am, anybody else? All right, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
No, a second.
Thank you, ma'am. Meeting adjourned, thank you everyone for joining us and uh we'll see you next week, same time, same place.